All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Town Council Meeting for November twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen. We're gonna start the meeting with a moment of silence. Our pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, in the best will, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a moment, have a moment of silence. Use it as you wish. We reflect on our duties as members of the Town Council. Keep in mind all our first responders and military personnel. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, we're taping the meeting and so is Elcat. Is anybody else taping the meeting?
Chris, get your own reminder.
Thanks, Chris. Public comments? None, right?
Well, there was someone who did sign up for public comments, but he withdrew. He could not make it tonight. So no public comments.
Counselor comments, or?
Um, one quick one, just as a note to everybody. I attended, it was yesterday, the meeting of the Debt Advisory Committee. They're doing a lot of great work. They're, at the end, they're wrapping things up a little bit, and they will, are starting the, the process of putting together a presentation for the, the council. We've set a date for, I think it's the twenty-fourth of January, our last meeting in January, or next to our last meeting in January. I've given that date to Tom to put on the calendar, to put beyond the agenda for their presentation on their works, but I think we'll be really happy with what they've come up with, so.
All right, anybody else? So now I'm actually gonna entertain a motion to move the screening committee update out of order in front of the Town Manager's Report because the screening committee's actually here and so that they can get, kinda get moving, okay?
Someone, second, wherever you guys.
Second.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Joe.
Okay, wanted to introduce the members of the screening committee. I really wanna take a moment to thank them for their time. This was a very condensed process. It required a lot of pre-work. It required a lot of meeting times, and they made a tremendous sacrifice to come together and perform this task for the town. So my hat's off to them, and I'd like to ask Frank Morcino, Ray Miller, Tom O'Connor, Anthony Gentile, and Mike Harrigan to please come forward and can share some thoughts with us and, and your, uh...
Stand in a semicircle.
Stand, yeah. Stand in a, then.
Well, I've been asked to be the spokesperson for the group, and first of all, we'd like to thank the council for their support and their leadership and their confidence in us. We had a very aggressive time schedule. We feel that we had the time necessary still to do the proper vetting of all the candidates. As all of you know, there was quite a few initial candidates who were interested, and we spent a lot of time and effort and came to unanimous decisions based upon those meetings and discussions that we had to finalize that group for you, and we feel that we've got three great candidates that we'd like to offer to you for your review and approval, one of them obviously as the new permanent town manager. Let me just, I'll start out in alphabetical order. The first candidate that we're recommending is Christopher Clark. The second candidate is Thomas Guereno, and the third candidate is Denise Minard. So those three candidates stood out in our minds above and beyond. The other candidates that we had, while all of them had good qualities, we felt that these three truly represented the profession and what we think is in the best interest of the town through their discussions with us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thanks for working so hard and getting it done so quickly. I know the schedule was tight, and I know everybody's got things going on, so thank you for your time.
I don't know if anybody else has, has anything to add, Mr. Char, but.
No.
And before we let you guys go.
You're not off the hook yet.
You know, most of what we did was an executive session, but if you guys would like to ask them any questions about, you know, the process itself, you know, please feel free.
Well, if you just wanted, for general, I guess, people that are watching, to explain what the process was and sort of, and what you're...
Well, initially the process was, we worked at the Collins Center. That was hired by the council to direct us. They put forth twenty-one initial resumes and applications for consideration. Of those twenty-one, we quickly weeded that down to a more manageable number. We went through them individually and rated them. The rating system that we used was yes, maybe, no. Very simple, very deliberate. It was easy to come to consensus using that formula rather than some of the traditional ones that we use, like we went through five and then to get bar down on their numbers. So with that said, we weeded it down to six candidates that we felt had what we felt was the best qualities that would help represent the town going forward. And then those six candidates were brought in for interviews, and we met with them individually, and the interviews lasted about forty-five minutes to an hour. And then we deliberated after each one while our mind was still fresh and discussed those candidates to decide whether or not they were ones that we would wanna move on, again, using the same process of yes, maybe, no. We came through the process with three candidates that stood out above the rest, in our opinion. And we thank the Chair of our committee, Joe, for his assistance in the, in the, in the process, and those are the three candidates that we feel would best suit the town.
Thanks.
How did you come to the decision of three versus any other number? Not unhappy with that, just...
Yeah, well, I mean, the consensus was, we went through the process. We did not wanna move candidates forward for the sake of moving them forward when we didn't feel that they were up to the quality of the individuals like we forwarded, like the three candidates that we had. So we used that as a measure.
Okay.
So rather than move forward a B candidate and waste everyone's time, at least in our opinion, we didn't wanna have you interview four, five, six candidates when they're clearly, in our opinion, again, they weren't of the quality of the three that we mentioned.
But you didn't have a number when you started.
No.
Yeah.
No. But it just became apparent through the process.
Just sort of how it works out.
Yeah, and it just worked out that way, and it was all unanimous decisions without, within the committee to move those three forward and the others were not so fortunate.
And we considered what was in the, the charter as far as qualifications for town manager. That was very important to us. But, you know, there was more than three that met those qualifications, but I think it was our feeling that these three would really be a good candidate for East Long Meadow. We felt, we felt it was important to consider the community that they're going to be the town manager for.
Now, the hard job is up to you.
Yes, no, and maybe. I gotta...
Works great.
It does. It's a good system you got here in town.
But you know, a big help to us too was the, the program from UMass Boston, the Collins Center.
Collins Center is a big asset.
Yes, they were.
Very well organized.
Not their first time around.
No.
I think Mary, I think Mary said that she had participated in fifty. Is that...
She is a large number.
Yeah, significant number. Tremendous experience and guidance she gave us, you know, helped move the process along.
Well, one nice thing about that is at least we got our money's worth.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes.
We hope.
Your money was lost.
Sounds like we did, anyway.
And we got fed, which was good.
Oh, even better.
Those are four-hour meetings.
I know, I know those are long. All right, thanks, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. So, um, to the Chair, a couple other housekeeping items to attend to. So Mary has sent me the resumes of just the three finalists, which I will forward to all of you later tonight. And then as we pick a date, I know we had tentatively set the twenty-ninth. I am not available on that day. I won't make it back in time. But, so we, we have to pick a day to give her, she said preferably two if you can. If there's conflicts and, and the candidates can't make the one day, then we're just gonna have to wait. And then, so if we can give her two dates that were available, she prefers them to be off-cycle from a full, uh, meeting.
Regular meeting.
Yep. And to try to leave about an hour and fifteen to an hour and a half between, you know, candidates. So does anyone have any suggestions for dates? I mean, I, I know we set the twenty-ninth aside, but I am available on the, um, the thirtieth.
I'm available pretty much.
Or the thirtieth or the first, I'm available. And we might, we might even wanna start at like five-thirty if everyone can make it that early.
Yeah, that's what we talked about in the other ones.
Yeah, or even, I mean, we probably, I could even do five on the, um, I don't know if that's too early for you guys, but.
No, that's fine.
On Thursday, December first.
So either the thirtieth or the first, I mean, we, we can, we, we should give her two dates, and if we can do them in the same week, then everything will be fresh if, if we have a candidate that goes into the second night for some reason.
Do you actually want the thirtieth and the first?
No.
No.
No, it works for me. You?
It's fine.
Go right around the tables. It worked for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's do that.
Start.
Don, you're good with it?
Absolutely.
And what, what do you guys prefer for a start time?
Five.
Five.
So the interviews will be held in open session, and if you could post both those meeting nights, we may not need both, both of them.
Can you post, I'm sorry, dates again?
Uh, November thirtieth and December first at five P M. And I'll, I'll give that information to Mary, and she'll work on scheduling with, with the candidates, and then I'll let you know if, if for some reason we didn't need the, one of the nights, then we'll just eliminate it. And I'm not sure if the deliberation of the candidates, since we're gonna be talking about specific information, should be held in open session. I don't know what your, what your thoughts are on that.
I think we got the...
I don't think it can.
I don't believe it can.
There he is.
There he is.
Speak of the angel.
Jim, thanks for coming. You're perfect timing. If we're discussing candidates for town managers. And their credentials. Does that have to be done in an open session?
Or recommendations or work circumstances.
Like our deliberations over who we want to hire.
So the interviews will be held in open session, but we're talking about the deliberation between the finalists. Is that to be held in open session or executive session?
Open.
Under, under state law, you can have your initial screening in executive session due to the interests of the individual candidates that they need some privacy to protect their rights with their present employers. But once you reach finalists, and you're gonna be here in your discussion about those, those discussions and the interviews are in open session.
Okay.
All right.
Joe, one thing I'd like to throw out there for consideration as part of this process is rather than simply an interview process, discussions, and a decision, I'd like to see us think about if we have a A top candidate or two top candidates out of the three, that we consider putting together a small team that would go out to their community where they have actually worked.
I wholeheartedly...
Yeah, speak to residents, speak to department heads, speak to coworkers, speak to all those, and kind of, I think it just, I know it's gonna prolong it another week or so, but I, I really think that it's well worth the effort.
Well, if, go ahead, as I say, if I may, I think if we're gonna do that, we should do it for all three candidates. I mean, I don't think when we meet, and this is just my opinion from doing this in the past, that when we meet and interview the three finalists, I think at that time we would probably choose a finalist. We're not gonna whittle it down to two and then go, you know, forward with the process. So I think if that's the case, we should...
That's fine with me, too. I mean, it's only, it's only adding one more. I, I was just thinking of the workload, that's all, but I, I don't object to that. That's, so that's three separate trips. It's, it's not...
Where are these people from? I think we know quite clearly who were one of the candidates from.
I know Tom, I think, is down on the Cape now.
They both are.
From the Cape.
Oh, you can go down there.
Right off.
So... It's the first time you get right off the trip, I'm like, yeah. You know, I, I think that's something that maybe Kevin should discuss with Mary. I don't know exactly what, maybe you'd have to describe to me a little bit more what you're intending on doing. They, 'cause they're, you know, the Collins Center is tasked with, you know, checking references. They're familiar to some degree with the candidates. You know, they check the, the background and, and screening responsibilities as well. So, so I, I don't know, you know, these people have been offered a job by us, and we're gonna go talk to people that, you know, work for them, and then if we don't offer them, you know, it's like, ye- yes, this is now public information. We've, we've given the names out, and, and I'm sure that they've, you know, talked to their boards as well because they, they've known for, you know, a few days now. So I, I don't know. I guess I have mixed feelings with that about...
It's not an uncommon practice when hiring a manager. In fact, it's very common. Feel free to talk to Mary about it. I'm sure she will tell you that it's, it's not uncommon to occur. I think it's an important part of our due diligence. I think that when you talk to people face to face, you learn things that you don't from a phone call, that you don't from a letter, that you don't from other communications. That's why I, yeah, am I thrilled about, you know, driving down to the Cape and back on one day? No, not particularly, as long as it's not a Friday, right? But, but I'll do it because I, I think it's that important. So, you know, I mean, I, I feel so strongly, Joe, that we did this when I hired firefighters, you know?
And I would echo that for, in education. That, that's an industry standard, especially for central office personnel. When you're down to finalists, you do a site visit.
We are potentially gonna have this candidate for a very long time, and, and so putting the little extra effort into making sure it's the candidate that is gonna be the right fit for our community. I think the, the committee's already decided they're well qualified. I don't think we need to re-investigate that. I think what we need to do is work toward the fit in, are they gonna, are they the right candidate for our community, not just a qualified candidate? And I, I don't think you can do that just in an hour, hour interview.
So are you suggesting we interview them first, then set up a site visit?
Uh, that would be, that would be my preference, and the only reason I say that is like...
Doesn't make any difference if you're putting all three through.
I think it does make a difference because if we go through the process and find a candidate, and then all of a sudden you go do a site visit and find out that for various reasons they're not gonna be compatible, then you're back to square one, and you've turned two other people away. I think you should see, I think you should look at all the candidates, all three of them, before we interview them. That's just my opinion.
You know, I, I don't think it will not work either way, but I, what I was suggesting, Paul, is this is done before an offer is made. This is part of our process before any offer is made. So we interview them. The only reason I say after the, one interview may glean we may not be particularly interested.
So in effect, will we, if we interview them, we're gonna choose a candidate that night, so you're only really looking at one candidate? I mean, if you interview three people and you've got, you, you, there's one, there's one candidate that stands out, why would you go look at the other two candidates, you know, at, at their place of employment or their current place of employment if you're not considering them for the job?
I think that's my point. If, if, if you had three of them come in and you're not particularly interested in one of them, but it's between the other two, then go visit the, the sites of those other two.
But you're prolonging the process of the interview process? In other words, you're not choosing...
I am. I, I started with, prefaced with that, that, I understand it, it prolongs the, the process, but I, I think it's well worth the time and effort to put into it.
So let me see if I'm hearing everybody correctly. What Eric's saying is, let's do the site visits first, then schedule the interviews?
Well, I've normally seen it done the other way around.
Yeah, I know.
I think we should interview first.
If, if, just as an example, there are two candidates that you're very interested in, one maybe not so much. Uh, those two candidates go visit the, the sites. That may give you the information that you need to make that, that final decision. But either way, I don't care if we do it before or after. I mean, you can still gleam a lot of good information. I'm just saying that I don't, I'm not comfortable making a decision on such a long-term impactful decision on our community without at least going to the communities where they have served and finding out a little more about, about them.
Okay, so who are you going to talk to in these communities?
Typically, you set up meetings with department heads, D P W Director, Police Chiefs, Fire Chiefs, Council on Aging, things like that. I've known folks that have, they go out to the local coffee shop and say, "Hey, ever have any interactions with the, the town, the town manager?" "Oh, yeah, great guy. He did the," you know, or, or that sort of stuff. You check local media, and they, you know, though a lot of times have a lot of stories. If there's been controversial stuff, how they handled that controversy, that sort of stuff. You just, you gleam an awful lot out from actually doing face-to-face visits and interviews.
And, and we did all that and more during the search process, but I, I've obviously had a substantial head start from you guys. I have no problem with whatever you guys feel comfortable with. I, I really, you know, again, Mary's been through this substantial amount of time, and I think, you know, either Kevin or Eric or Kathleen, you know, one of you guys should reach out to her and, and ask her opinion and how that is, is done, you know, how it would be done delicately, and make people available at specific times. We can't just randomly start walking around town halls and, you know, asking people questions.
Oh, no, no. You gotta call out ahead of time and make a point.
You call ahead of time, and actually the candidate is aware that you need to go.
Right.
And, and I'm only speaking from my experience as an educator, and that individual...
No, no, it's no surprises to anybody. You don't, you don't do that.
Would actually set up a site visit opportunity and where department heads or other key stakeholders have an opportunity to come in and visit the screening committee over coffee or...
Yeah, I mean, whatever, whatever you guys wanna do.
Customarily, too, you also allow the candidate the opportunity to show you around, show you the community, show you things, projects he's been involved in, and things that he's, he's proud of.
Yeah, I mean, we should definitely use Mary to facilitate that. So, you know, who would like, is that something you wanna do? Is one of you guys wanna volunteer?
I do think it's important that we, we hired Collins to help with this, and they've done an excellent job, but I would also be interested in hearing Mary's take on this. If, I mean, you, you say she's been involved in upwards of fifty similar types of searches, maybe we're, there is a redundancy to this step. I don't know, and to get her take on it.
Okay. So we're gonna move forward with the thirtieth and the first. We're gonna set the interviews. In the meantime, between now and then, we'll have Mary's take on it.
Yeah, I'll have it for tomorrow afternoon.
Either way, I, I'm fine either way. Whatever you guys wanna do, I, I understand, you know, the, the purpose of that, and, and if that's, you know, something that she can coordinate for us and help facilitate, great. And so then we'll set those dates, then we'll potentially do the site visits and then have to collaborate after. In the meantime, between all of that, we're gonna have a normal meeting so we can give an update, because we're, what, December sixth?
Mm-hmm.
So our normal scheduled meeting.
If you go back to December sixth, there was a couple issues with the search.
I was hoping we could talk about that date tonight.
We're gonna bring up if we can switch to sixth date. Two reasons why. One is Mike is unavailable. He's got prior commitment, but he wants to be at the meeting because of the importance of what's going on with the town manager search and so on. And if you look down the agenda here, December sixth is the E R C five Chamber of Commerce thing that we were all invited to, so.
We actually don't need the meeting on the sixth. We meet on the thirteenth. The thirteenth is the second Tuesday, which is our...
The sixth was already held in case we needed...
Yeah, the sixth was held in case for interviews, Joe.
Okay, right.
So the thirteenth, right?
Okay. So you wanna just meet, we're gonna just go to the thirteenth? Right.
And then while we're on that topic, we do have a scheduled meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Right.
So I'm suggesting we probably reschedule that.
I know, we never did an appointment between Christmas, uh, meeting between Christmas and New Year's, yeah.
Yeah, I...
I mean, I'm around, so either way.
I, I mean, I'm here, too, but...
Why don't we, why don't we...
Well, I'm just saying I'm around.
If not needed, that being towards the end of this process, we may need it.
Right, okay.
So if...
Tentatively we'll...
Tentatively...
Cancel it?
Leave it on there for now, but, you know, we can decide like on the thirteenth whether we're gonna need it.
All right, so that's kinda out of order, but it was on there, so I just wanted to bring it up.
Only because of this process I bring it up.
No, no, I follow you.
Yeah.
All right, so i- if we determine that we are going to do site, you know, we do our interviews on the, the thirtieth and/or the first or both, and then we determine that we are gonna set up site visits, we don't have to meet again to go do a site visit. Like, we can just do them.
Right.
And then we meet again on the thirteenth, and we can then, you know, collaborate then.
Right.
Yep.
On what, you know, and, and give our, I mean, it's a good span of time in between. It's, you know, it gives us roughly two weeks.
Yeah, we should have plenty of time.
I don't know who else would be interested. I'd be interested in doing site visits. I don't know who else from the council would be.
It's all a function of time. I mean, like I said, if it's...
Depends.
I'm doing closings and looking at my calendar, at these people that wanna close on their deals before the end of the year or before Christmas.
Yeah, I, I can participate in some of that, me in a fashion. I guess we're guessing two could go and two or however many might wanna go to Vermont, two might go to the Cape, two might go to Windsor.
No, they're both, they're both on the Cape.
What are the towns in the Cape? Reason I ask is 'cause I know some, all right, yeah, in Mid-Cape?
Garment.
I'm not even gonna guess, guys.
Okay, I'll, I'll...
When I see the...
Harwich. Harwich and Bourne.
There you go, Harwich and Bourne. So Harwich is slightly farther. So, and then one is local, obviously.
I know the former town manager.
Who's that? I'll do, I'll do the local one.
I'll do the local one.
All right, so Eric.
Okay, so it sounds like we got a plan in place. Any other...
Tomorrow, then I'll just forward it to you. Then you wanna coordinate the site visits, if that's...
Anything else, so we need to discuss?
No, she wishes to discuss it.
No, just that we're talking about whoever's picked to do what town. They're not, they're not gonna do all three towns, right?
Yeah. No, as a group, yeah, you pick three days.
No, I meant if you're doing, let's just say the Cape, are you doing Windsor or East Windsor is Windsor as well, or is somebody else going in that direction?
No, I think, the way I've seen it done in the past is if there's four of us going, four of us go to that one town that day.
Okay.
And then the next day we'll go to the, the other town. And so if we're gonna go to three communities, we're talking three days, so out of a week. You know, if we're gonna try to condense it all into one week.
You know, what I was uncertain about was if two are going to one town, two are going to another, and two are going to the third town, knock it all off. But the same group will visit all three communities, is what we're saying.
I mean, we don't have to, we can come up with a better, but historically, that's the way I've seen it done in other communities. Kathy or Nadia had like the same experience.
So that there is...
Everybody knows the same information.
A standardization of the information, yes.
Yeah.
The question would be is if we could do the two Cape ones on the second...
He might be able to...
I would hope so.
To do Bourne and Harwich on a morning.
Yeah, that, that likely be a long day, but, you know, if you, if you leave early and, and spend half the day in one and the half the day in the other, you might be able to do that.
Yeah, it seems smarter to me. I don't drive there twice, but...
It does.
Okay. Anything else?
Don was gonna offer his place.
Well, yeah, I just gotta put the heat pack on, but that's no problem. We can take care of that. Easy, easy peasy.
All right, sounds we've got a plan in place.
All right. Town Manager Report, Denise.
We have a six-thirty.
Oh, we have a six-thirty.
Yes, let's go to hearing.
Are they here?
Oh, he is here.
Okay.
Never mind, you're back burner again.
We're all...
Put off one more time, Denise.
Sorry, Denise.
Sorry.
I don't know why you want this job. So don't talk her out of it.
Yeah. All right, so we have a public hearing scheduled to address applications for the Gunther Rowley Post two ninety-three for a change in manager. I'm gonna introduce the council. To my right is Donna Anderson, Eric Madison, myself, Kevin Manley, Paul Federici, Joe Ford, Kathleen Hill, and Michael Kane. This is a public hearing. The procedure is as follows. I'm gonna open the public meeting. Clerk will read the legal notice into record. Love the applicant presenting his or her plan to the council. Meeting is being recorded. Need any person speaking to identify themselves clearly and state their home address for the record. After the applicant has finished his or her presentation, we'll open the hearing for public input. Anyone wishing to speak to the point and not be redundant, all... Anyone wishing to speak, uh, to the point and not be redundant, all speaking parties need to address the president, not each other. After public, after the public has addressed the council, I'll close the public hearing. At that time, the council will discuss among themselves the matters pertinent to the plan. The council then either take a vote to make a decision or take the matter under advisement. That being said, I will now open the public hearing for the change of, uh, manager for Gunther Rowley two ninety-three.
Now, I will read the notice for the public hearing. Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty-eight of the general laws that Gunther Rowley Post two ninety-three, American Legion Incorporated, Three Legion Court, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, has applied for a change in manager from Brian Tidlin to Michael J. Flynn. The town council as licensing authority proposes to act thereon at the town council meeting on Tuesday, November twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, at six P.M. In the meeting room at the East Long Meadow Senior Center, three twenty-eight North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts. Kevin Manley, President, Paul Federici, Vice President, Kathleen G. Hill, Donald J. Anderson, Eric H. Madison, Michael J. Kane, Joseph Ford, acting as the license authority.
All right, okay, can you step up a night?
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, my name is Roger Kellman, sixteen Cedarville Road, East Long Meadow. I'm the finance officer for Gunther Rowley Post two ninety-three. We have been proud members of this community since we were chartered by the American Legion in nineteen thirty. We've incorporated as a, uh, in Massachusetts as a nonprofit veterans organization, nineteen thirty-four. And we have about, um, a hundred and fifty or so members right now. They come from all branches of the service. I'd say fifty percent from East Long Meadow, probably another larger percent from Long Meadow, and the balance from other surrounding towns. And we have veterans from World War II that still show up at the meetings, and we have veterans from the, the latest conflicts in Iraq and Afghanistan. Uh, we have a building at Three Legion Court, which we've been in since, I think, nineteen thirty-five. And we do have, on the first floor, we have a meeting room where we have our monthly meetings, we have dinners there, uh, and other occasional events. On the first, at the basement level, we have a bar and an entertainment room. Uh, that is open most days of the week from three to nine P.M., and it is open only to members and their guests. And I think that's, uh, Commander Michael Flynn, who is probably trying to hustle here from work, is the bar manager that's being proposed, but I can probably answer any questions that you or the public ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think my, my only question was, does, does Michael have any, uh, experience in managing a bar?
He's been a member for quite a few years and has been very active there. Uh, he has, uh, been active with the, uh, the former bar manager and with the bartenders that are there, so I would say yes.
And, and in that time, has he ever had any, all his experiences with that one facility, not, not elsewhere? Okay.
Yes. Uh, he's, he is not a professional bar manager, he is a, as the commander, he's a volunteer. Uh, but he takes his responsibilities there very seriously, and so do we.
As a private club, is he required to be TIP certified?
Uh, the bartenders are. I don't know specifically about the bar manager. I believe he has also taken the program. I'm not sure whether he's certified or not.
Does anyone have an answer to that?
I do not.
Or don't?
I don't know.
No. Hey Jim?
Jim, you know the answer to that question?
Just that it would be appropriate for the, uh, council to consider, if you're gonna approve the manager, did you require as part of the approval that he received TIP certification, so he understands the process that his employees have to follow with respect to serving with alcohol?
That's fine.
I believe he would also have to be crowd manager certified.
I'm sorry?
I believe he would also have to be crowd manager certified-
Oh, okay.
As a manager of a bar. It, it sounds extensive, it's not, it's all online, it's, it's-
Right.
Quite easy to go through, through the Department of Fire Services. So, I, I, I would also add that that should be a condition.
So, we're doing a crowd manager in TIP, right?
Next question. Um, what are the hours of operations at the bar is open?
Generally speaking, from three to nine P.M. It, it varies depending on the day and really whether there are-
Open Sundays, or?
People there, yes.
Okay, so, three to nine, pretty much every day of the week. Would, um, what would his hours be as far as being physically active on the job? Would he have, uh, some, it's like a twenty-hour work week, or would he be there most of the time?
No, it's much more, it's much more flexible than that. I mean, we have, you know, some nights, we may only have three or four, uh, members that are in attendance, so it's, it's nothing that requires a, uh, you know, a full-time bar manager's presence.
Okay, so-
So, it's, it's much more flexible than that.
Typical week is pretty much you'll be there as needed?
I, I see him there quite often, I'm there quite often myself. I'm headed down to play darts right after this.
So, it's a pretty flexible work schedule for him?
Yes, yes. We have no, we have no full-time employees, we have no employees in fact.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, the bartenders are-
What, what's his-
Members or associate members that do it as volunteers.
Is he retired, or does he have a day job, or?
He has a day job, and sometimes running into the night.
What, what would his day jobs, day job be?
He is-
Or line, just generally?
Uh, he does mechanical, uh, ventilation.
Okay.
He's with air, air combustion engineering, I believe.
And so that-
He lives, he lives very close in East Long Meadow.
I'm just trying to think, you know, his availability, you know, for events and so forth, he'll be, you know?
I think he's, I mean, he's available for emergencies, certainly. One of the, one of the new requirements is that there be a, a, a backup bar manager, which we don't have in place right now. I may wind up being the second bar manager. I believe, that may be a new requirement. We were not aware of it, but I see it's in the new, uh, renewal for this, this current year.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public wanna speak on this? Nope, all right. All right, so now we're gonna close the public hearing. Now we can talk about what we wanna do.
Yeah, I'll make a motion so we can talk about it, and I'd make a motion that we okay the appointment of Michael J. Flynn as the bar manager, uh, conditional upon the successful completion of TIPS and crowd management training, and that, um, proof of, of such, uh, be forwarded to the town manager's office within sixty days.
Second.
Just been, uh, moved to second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now Denise.
Are you sure?
Maybe, not, not really. We'll see what else comes up.
Um, I actually have a pretty brief report tonight, only because it's a condensed week this week, so, a lot of things that would be done on Thursday, Friday usually, were done yesterday, today, signing a stack of, um, requisitions, uh, huge, uh, just a lot of stuff going on. So, our, um, my first item is really a great one. Our Public Health Director, Amy Petroski, has been asked to serve on the Massachusetts Environmental Health Association Board, which is a, a great opportunity for East Long Meadow, certainly a credit to Amy. Um, and she'll be representing, um, us on the statewide board, and the added benefit is that it expands her contacts, her network of, um, people, so, um, to, to use as resources, so congratulations to Amy. Uh, that won't happen until after the new year, but she's, she's pretty excited, and it's an honor, so that's a good thing. I had a very preliminary meeting with the, with Attorney John Drost. He's counsel for the Great Horse Country Club, that was last week. He assured me he's working with the owners, um, and, engineering for a firm, tie and bond, to understand where they are in the planning process for their project and how the water and sewer needs are, are being planned. Uh, within a few days, and I don't know if it's because of that meeting, I, I received a phone call from one of the owners and, uh, the manager of the project, and met with them yesterday, and it was a very good meeting. They said that they have some kind of approval from the town of East Long Meadow a while ago, like two thousand eleven, they thought, um, for, for them to be able to move forward with planning sewer and water from our town, uh, for theirs. They have, um, they have plans pretty well done, and I asked them to please, um, get some evidence of that approval. I've since talked with, uh, the Public Works Director, Bob Parent, he knows of no such approval. I spoke with a planner, because I would think it might have something to do with them as well, and they don't know that, you know, neither of them know of any kind of approvals, so I'm waiting for, um, those folks to get back to me. With Scotty Antinacci and Jonathan, I don't remember Jonathan's last name. I actually worked with him back in Connecticut, and he's a, a pretty good folks to work with. So, I'm sure, I'm sure they're going to be scouring what kind of approval, because as I said to them, it's, it's kinda puzzling, it's an awful lot of money for them to be putting out there without having a piece of paper that says we can do this, so, I don't know what they have. That, that'll continue, I'll keep working on it. I participated in an open meeting law webinar, um, hosted by the Attorney General's Office, and I've, um, attached a few of the highlights. Uh, things like, um, telephone, um, meetings, can somebody phone in, that kind of stuff. So, it's just very few highlights, there were like thirty-five pages of, of, um, slides. You can go online and look at them, at the whole thing. Uh, we can, if you want, in the future, uh, we can arrange to maybe have a training session on open meeting. It, it wa- it was pretty interesting, did a lot on executive session, a lot of detail on that, so, we could talk about that in the future. The regional meeting of the Boards of Selectment, I won't go into a whole lot, you all were there, and, um, uh, they spoke a little bit about regionalization of police and fire dispatch that is moving forward. Um, just a, a cert-, uh, study committee for it and how they would put that together. It's definitely something that is being, um, very, um, the, the state really wants us to get to that, uh, regional dispatch.
Denise, can you hang on one second?
Uh-huh.
Cause I just need you to say your name and-
Ma, I can't speak my name.
Thank you. Go ahead.
You someone interrupted.
So, so-
You couldn't get all the way through that sheet, Ralph, you didn't throw it-
You, you just wanna stop me again, huh? Um, so I, um, I, we all, all of us that were there saw that presentation. It's a much bigger thing. I think, Paul, you're, you're part of that committee, so, at any time, I'm sure Paul is willing to, I don't know the history, I went to the last one. The, the next one was, uh, rescheduled because they had some kind of conflict or something, so, uh, I've only been to one, but it's certainly in the works.
It definitely is. We've been talking about this for a number of years, and, uh, it's, we finally got a group together. We've got, I'm trying to think if I can name all the towns. I know it's Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, Hamden, Wilbraham, Ludlow, Southwick.
Southwick.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. And, uh, we're all looking at a regional, regional dispatch area. Um, originally, there was a little, it's sort of, I don't wanna say any infancy, cause we are moving along. Our group, we're in, we're in the Finance Committee, I'm the chairman of the Finance Committee of that, and, uh, we're trying to put together the, the overview and the plan for it, you know, from a financial standpoint. And, um, they're also looking at locations. As a matter of fact, they originally thought of a location in Ludlow that was going to cost a tremendous amount to retrofit, but there is actually property in East Long Meadow that we looked at. Um, I won't go into details where it is, but, uh, um, that has much more potential, because it's, it's much farther along, there'd be less that has to be done to it to have it available for the, um, you know, for, for the regional dispatch. So, we're getting there, it's just a process, and I know we have to, we have to get moving on it, because there's deadlines in the, in the spring for grant monies, um, and we wanna get our applications in, so we're, we're gonna be ramping up toward the next month or two to, uh, get the information together, to be able to put these grants requests in. And I'll keep, definitely keep you posted as we go along.
It's difficult to have six communities with all that emergency services groups, uh, that, that, how many were at the table, maybe?
Twenty, close.
Yeah.
Twenty-two?
Uh, well, no, at the, at the-
Oh, I think, yeah.
Regionalization meeting?
Yeah.
I think it was more than that. Um, and they all have their pet things, you know, which kind of radio system, who's got the new one, who wants FM, who wants-
It, there's all kinds of stuff out there that's being discussed, and it's-
And, well-
I'm sorry, I felt bad.
I'm not a, yeah, I'm not a radio person, but, you know.
And one, and one thing, one thing as far as East Long Meadow is, we're sort of the anomaly, because we still have officers manning the phones where has, as the other towns have civilian dispatchers, so it's a, it's a sort of a bigger leap of faith on, on our part than it is for the other towns, so.
Yeah, um, so, so that's, um, that's something that's moving forward. Um, additionally, um, representatives of the Mass Department of Energy and Environmental Affairs was there, and they led a discussion about energy efficiencies, and one of the things for the green community, uh, was, um, streetlight, ownership of streetlights and all of that. I then spoke with the next day. Very interesting, I've already done that research where I last worked, and it's, I, I agree with what was said there. It is very difficult to get the information from the utility companies. Um, our name wasn't on the list of, of, um, is it Western Mass Electric or something?
Yeah, that was never sourced with, they didn't have a national grid list.
Well, because we're national grid. So, Bob Parent, I spoke with him about it, and has it ever been studied? Is it something that we would look forward to? Do we own any of our streetlights? He said we do not. It is national grid that we have to go to, and I, you know, I suggested that it's something that we should at least know where we are on, on that kind of a process, if it's something to, to do. Um, as they said at the meeting, it's, it's about a three to five-year payback, but it's a huge amount of money, so, um, the streetlights are very expensive. The utility companies don't really care if, if we don't, if we stop using them, because it's a moneymaker for them. So, we, we just need to continue that path, and that, that will be going forward. Um, council by-
Denise, on that, no, I just, I, I know we can't tackle it now, cause we, we've got too many irons in the fire, but at some point, I think this is, be, becoming a green community is something we might wanna seriously consider. There's a huge amount of money and grants available out there to make our-
To help it, right.
Community so much more efficient, um, in, in, they call it green, call it whatever you want, it saves us money, um, over the long haul. And I think this is something that we oughta, we might wanna put together a, for lack of better terms, a, a, a little task force. Um, some, the, the council will have to be involved, because some aspects of it require legislative action, but, so, um, but I, I think it's something that we might wanna look into. Like I say, right now, we got enough irons in the fire, but in the not-too-distant future, I think we wanna go deeper into this.
I agree. Actually, Long Meadow's a, already a green community. Uh, you, you do, you get a lot of grant money to, to help with it, and if you are a green community, it puts you in a pool for other kinds of monies as well, so.
And, and to that end, not just to piggyback on what you're saying, we were informed at that meeting that, I, if, I don't know if you remember, but a number of years ago, we approached the town to become a green community, and it was hardly shut down, and one of the reasons was the builders were saying that there was such a big, very, discrepancy in between-
Ten thousand dollars, yeah.
Yeah, like, yeah, ten thousand dollars, but now, um, because of the new building codes that have been proposed to the state, they're so close that it, it's really not a big difference anymore to, you know, become a green community. The, the building codes are gonna be almost the same as they would be for a green community, so.
It's actually, in some cases, the building code's even more green than, cause they haven't upgraded the green community standards, so, you know, so it's, they've been merging.
The, the biggest factor is a third party, a, a third-party oversight. That's it, that's the difference now. Um, so, you're talking about, uh, this is just as it relates to the Stretch Energy Code, which is only one part of the whole green community pro-, uh, uh, process, but from the Stretch Energy Code standpoint, the way he explained it the other night, there's that third-party inter-, um, involvement.
Right.
Which is about a fifteen-hundred dollar bill.
Was he also suggesting that some of that can be paid through money from Mass Safe? Thought I heard him say that, it was a difference of nine hundred something dollars.
Yeah, there was an incentive.
With Mass Safe rebates and incentives-
There was an incentive, but I don't remember the specifics.
That that could help offset it, so that even brings the number even closer to, to the zero point.
Yeah.
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 But we can invite Jim to come make a presentation, uh, you know, and speak to, speak here, and by default, speaking to the public on LCAT, and, uh, talk about it, that could be something on our, our agenda for twenty seventeen.
And LCAT would be a, a good venue for that, to have a presentation through LCAT.
Yeah, he was here the last time, he was, he spoke to, you know, the planning board, the, the, last time the planning board was, uh, because it was, uh, the zoning matter, uh, was involved with, uh, trying to present it.
I have, I have his phone number, or email address. I got that from him.
So, as we go, as we check things off of our priority list, you know, we might, at some point, we're- some point, we're going to be looking to, what do we want to add on next? This might be a really worthwhile project.
I guess the schools already did some retrofit of lighting.
Lighting, yeah. That was all grant money as well.
Yeah. Council Vice President Federici made me aware of an MMA Annual Meeting and Trade Show. That's, that's January twentieth and twenty-first. I've attached some information on it. Please let Marge know if you're interested in attending and we'll figure out how that all gets registered and all of that.
If I may add, it's very informative. There's class, there's classes. There's also a trade show, which is, as far as I'm concerned, as much if not more informative than the classes. And, and speaking of what we did a few minutes ago, if you go there, you're going to see a half a dozen streetlight companies trying, trying to push their LED lights there, so.
Yeah. Okay, staffing updates. Assistant Town Clerk, welcome to Jean Girdon? Is it Girtan?
Girtan.
Girtan, who started this Monday, November first, twenty-first, as the Assistant Town Clerk. So I, if you have anything, maybe Tom could update us on, on her first few days?
Yeah, we're certainly excited to have her come on board. She comes to us from our friends in Monson. Already starting to get her the access, the permissions to the voter registration system and the vital records. And as you can see, she's very, will provide great support to us at the council. And, you know, has great work experience. And she's going to be a big part of our organization. And with having a, you know, an opening there for a while, it's great to have, have her on board to, to fill that gap. And I just want to say again, thanks to Marge for her dual capacity of coming down when necessary for the election until Jeanie was hired for full-time. But again, look forward to having a full staff and having her on board.
And Mary too. Don't forget Mary.
And Mary too, absolutely. Big, big poll, put it in, three thousand eight hundred early voting envelopes into the system. So that was awesome.
Well, my approach is that we're all in it together, right? How many times did I say that? Don't worry, we'll figure it out.
And that whole election with all those people, couldn't have been a better example of teamwork. So we're, we're happy it, it all worked out like it did.
Yeah. We have, we have great staff. We really have great staff. Library Director, Leila Johnston, accepted the position of Library Director. She works for the Springfield City Library. She's delightful. I just thought she was great. She'll be starting December nineteenth. The library board was unanimous in their choice. Welcome, Leila. I actually met with her today. I've implemented an offer letter kind of documentation that documents their start date, their salary, all of that. And, and she got her new hire paperwork. So when she comes on the first day, she's got all of that information filled out and ready to go. So she, she's psyched to be coming and we're really happy to have her. The Board of Directors of the Library is really relieved. Public Works, I'm sorry?
Denise, could you, on that, could you, if, if the board agrees or the council still agrees, could you direct a letter on behalf of the council and yourself from the, to the acting about, there's a woman that didn't want to do it and she did it out of commitment to the department. And she's been there far too long in that capacity. And she's done a phenomenal job. So I, I, I think it's well worth a little letter of thank you.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. That's a great idea. Public Works, Bob Parent and I met to discuss replacement of the Town Engineer. And he's, he wants to look at the position. I encourage that with any position that, that believes in a new person comes on board. Let's look at that job description. Now's the time to modernize it to what the current needs of the position are. And he said it's not a rush to fill it very, very quickly. It's not something where he wants them go on and a new one onboard in a couple of weeks. He said he's got the time to sort of look it over. He's an engineer himself, so he can fill that piece of it. And he just wants to be sure that they have the right fit. Town Manager's Office, the temporary assistant filling started last week and we appear to be staying ahead of what needs to be done in the office. The Health Department's also using a swap participant. Do you all know what a swap, swap participant is?
Senior.
Swap is, they're senior, senior residents that can get a tax break. And they, I think it's a great program. And they're actually vetted through a committee, a swap committee. So we have a couple of people that didn't have enough hours to fully get their, the reduction in taxes. So we're taking advantage of those. There's two of them now in my office, one working to help the Health Department. We've got, we've got so much paper in that office that even things like starting electronic filing of things, using, using the swap person to just do scanning of documents is, is really a big help. Because all those files either need to be moved to the new spaces as they become completed, or, you know, can we toss some of it, which means asking the state for permission to do that, but you have to go through them all. We found newspaper articles from nineteen sixty-eight, I think, was one of them today. Probably not something that we need to move from one office to another.
It's more reason than the health regulations.
They're looking at a lot of the older files and, you know, they're, they're great to have onboard. So that's really all I have. And I wish you all a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You say?
Thank you. Thank you, Denise. So now we have the November tenth, two thousand sixteen open session minutes. We did the act and the minutes and motions for...
Make the motion to accept the November tenth, two thousand sixteen open session minutes as submitted.
Don, those had to change it too, right?
Yeah, I, 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 I was stealth that day.
Oh, was that open? I thought it was...
That was the open, the open one, that one, forgot me.
Oh, okay.
But I was in the comments.
Wait, I'm sorry. And I'll amend my motion.
They're in there.
They have been changed.
He's in there. He's back.
With, with the changes of Dawn's attendance.
All right.
That's right.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Here and none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we have to approve act and the minutes and motions of the executive session from November tenth.
Make the motion to accept the November tenth, two thousand sixteen executive session minutes as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Here and none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If I may, Mr. President, just for Tom's purposes. I wasn't here that day, so I didn't vote. So just so you can note the vote.
Yeah. I abstained.
I abstained, yes.
I don't like my first.
You didn't ask me, so I didn't.
Communication, correspondence, and announcements. We did the public hearing. The East of the River Chamber of Commerce Government Holiday Reception is Tuesday the sixth, from five to seven. I don't know if everybody got, everybody got postcards?
Mm-hmm.
From there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's just, we just show up and we don't have the RCPs? It just seemed to suggest that if companies wanted to sponsor it...
I think they, I think they did want the RCP.
Okay.
So if you let me know, I'll...
Yeah, I'll go.
I'll go.
Yeah. That's right, you have a top like that.
Mike's working, so.
So you can't be there?
And so we rescheduled our meeting for that night, or canceled it.
Well, we rescheduled, yeah. But not because of that, just...
No, no, I'm just saying, we already...
Yeah. Did you get me, Denise?
Got you.
Thank you.
All right. December twenty-seventh meeting, we talked about that already. Old business, the Town Manager screening, we've done that. New business, licensing matters.
I put that in the agenda just to let the council know that, that's a consistent thing that's going to be, there's going to probably be something on licensing every meeting. There could be some with just a couple items, some with a lot of items. Toward the end of the year, there's a lot of renewals. And again, there may be some meetings with nothing, but I just wanted to put it on there to make it a consistent topic, almost like financial matters. Some meetings there may be none, some meetings there may be a lot. But it's just, just to make it a consistent item for each meeting, so.
Financial matters. I think that's Sarah's, Sarah's thing?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Good guess.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening.
So I'm here because we have the East Long Meadow Cable Access Television Department, otherwise known as LCAT. There was a change in Mass General Law and we are no longer allowed to account for it in a revolving fund on our general ledger. So there are two options that we have. We can have it as a special revenue account, or we can adopt an enterprise fund for the East Long Meadow Cable Access. I am recommending that we adopt an enterprise fund for East Long Meadow Cable Access. It will operate very, very similarly to how we were currently operating the revolving account. You do a budget for your revenues, you do a budget for the expenses. The expenses do include things like benefits. So it would be very similar to what you have seen in the warrant previously for water and sewer. So really, all it is, is a change in the location on my general ledger, an account number. And I have to fill out one more report when I fill out the tax rate recap. Otherwise, no other change that anybody else would notice really to how we're changing it. So I'm here before you today to ask for you to adopt that.
Sarah, can an enterprise fund carry over a balance?
Yes, it can.
Okay.
So an enterprise fund, that's a great question. An enterprise fund and even a special revenue fund are both types of funds that, that the general fund cannot just go and take the money out of, unlike a revolving account. So an enterprise fund, it retains its own undesignedated balance and it operates kind of like a mini general fund, that it has to fund itself. It has to show that the revenues are going to offset its expenses. It has to be balanced. If at some point, should it ever not be balanced, it would need to request a general fund subsidy. So far, we've never had that kind of an issue with LCAT. It produces more than enough revenue to be able to support its department. And what would happen is, once you adopted it tonight, then when we begin the budget process, one of the things that the budget will present is to take the balance from the current revolving and move it into your enterprise as your beginning balance for your enterprise fund. So that, that's what would happen in the spring. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep.
And Dawn Mackey's on board.
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. I did meet with Dawn Mackey. We both discussed it. He is fully on board with this option and had no issues with it, but he had a previous engagement this evening, so he can attend.
And debt can be paid?
Correct.
Out of it?
Correct.
And appropriations from it still require a legislative action by this body?
Correct. But debt can be, there can be debt and it would be paid solely by the LCAT enterprise fund, just like water and sewer, how they do it. So...
Basically, what they're doing now.
Basically, it's the same exact thing, which is why I'm recommending to do that. It's just...
Because that's where they pay their benefits and everything else out of, right?
Correct.
Currently?
Correct. We are one of the few communities in the state that was already doing it that way. So that's why for us, it's a very easy process for us to change it to enterprise fund. And when I spoke to DOR earlier this month, that they just recommended that we move on changing it out of revolving.
Change the name?
Yep.
It's a name.
Name change and an account number. It's just where in my general ledger, but essentially it's the same exact thing.
So, so with that, then I'll make a motion that we establish the LCAT to an enterprise fund effective for the fiscal year twenty eighteen budget.
Second, second. I think you want it sooner, right?
No, fiscal, fiscal eighteen, we cannot adopt it sooner because the tax rate recap has already been set. However, if in the motion you could just cite Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half.
F and a half?
F and a half.
F and a half?
Yes.
Not much experience with MGL.
I was going to say, no, no, I just said the F and a half.
So let me reword the motion. I move that we...
You should get the full F.
Establish the LCAT under an enterprise fund in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F and a half under Massachusetts General Law, effective for the fiscal year twenty eighteen budget.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The next item is the audit update. The auditors have completed their audit. I have the draft financials. Just working on a couple, like little nitpicky things with the auditor, probably finishing that up tomorrow. So the report will be issued next week. Once it is done, it will be posted on our website, just like all of our other audit reports. That is for the financial statement audit as well as our single audit. So the single audit, for those who aren't sure, that is our audit done of all federal funds that we received. So you have, you have to list any federal monies that you've received and spent. And so a separate audit and separate audit rules are done over that. For instance, one of the big differences with the single audit is any dollar amount is considered material. And it's primarily control of, a test of controls and what their significant weaknesses. Whereas a financial statement audit, it tests some controls, but it also tests the numbers themselves. And they create a threshold as to what is considered material. So a ten-dollar error most likely is not going to be something that would be brought forward because it's, it's ten dollars. It's considered immaterial when you're looking at the whole size of, of the town. But for a single audit, ten dollars would show up on that, that report. The draft single audit report has that there were no findings this year and that there were no issues in controls. And the financial statement audit also had a very good review. There is a management letter that will be coming. I am expecting to see that draft next week. And once that, that is issued, then you will also be provided that. The management letter typically gives you areas where we can improve or how we did do on issues that were last year as to how we could prove this here.
Sarah, do you typically, the Town Manager would get a copy of that draft as well?
Um, sure.
What we would talk about it?
Absolutely. Mm-hmm.
And if I may, just embarrass Sarah. When, when she came aboard here, we had, in the past, we had some, some issues in our management letter that, that had been repeated year after year after year. And now that Sarah's gotten here and sort of taken over the reins, it's a much cleaner picture, if you will. And, and, and there's less, there's less for the auditors to, to look at in question. And I just wanted to compliment her on the job she's done over the last couple of years.
Thank you. Yeah, I can do without my staff. My staff are wonderful.
Good job.
Thank you.
Next.
Currently, there is no appropriation for funding of the council pay.
We knew that.
So, I don't know, I didn't ask for this item to be on the agenda. Sorry.
The motion was like, sort of, time-consuming and had a lot of different issues with it.
So I spoke with Sarah about it, about what the different options are. And there are three, the way I understand it. One is to take from reserve, the other is from free cash, and the third is to transfer from within the budget. Depending on how quickly the council wants to be paid, if we wait a while, we probably don't have to take any money from any place except other budgets that may have some extra money in it. And that can be done by the town manager. And it's just the, probably the easiest way Sarah seemed to be recommending. But that's only if you don't care if we wait a while to, to start the pay.
It's just so early in the current fiscal year that it's, it's hard to judge what, how much of a turnback you would have in different departments, that it would be a little premature, in my, my professional opinion, to do it right now.
I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I have no problem waiting.
I don't either.
I don't know.
I think it's you and the others.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I just had a question. I can't remember what it was.
I have one.
It'll come back to me when you're not around.
I have a question for the council. I know that in the past, we've talked about a monthly payment to, to the council. But, and this is to Sarah as well, can we just do one annual payment to the council? And are you all comfortable with that, just doing?
Sarah, was there a reason why we went to monthly? I don't...
Uh, no, it was, it was often just paid that way in the past for the Board of Selectmen. And so I think that's...
I was just curious what, like...
That's why. No. You can be paid once a year, as long as we call it a, it would be a stipend if it was called a salary. Then we would have other problems there.
It's not going there.
And it couldn't exceed a month if, if it were that. But a stip, an annual stipend for your duties, then you could by all means do that. And if we were to do that, for when the election comes around, we would prorate then. So, you know, we would make sure that the person going out and the person coming in is to, to have all that, because that would be in April versus a June thirtieth. We could work out all those details. That's not a problem.
It's served to July first.
Oh, it's still July first? Oh, perfect.
Then there's no problem then.
Yeah. So it doesn't have to work any out. It's already worked out.
See, look, Paul's right.
So does that make sense to you all to just do an annual?
So is it paid retroactively? In other words, you get paid in June backwards? Because you're always, I'm, you're always concerned of the off chance of a resignation or somebody moving and leaving the town and then having to, then you, then how do you chase the money back type of thing?
So if, in the past, what we have done, if somebody has an annual stipend that we pay in... So, if, in the past, what we have done, if somebody has an annual stipend that we pay in June, if they were to leave sooner than that, then we pay them prorated for whichever portion of the year that they served and we pay them that shortly after the resignation, the next pay period that we're able to, for that period. And then whomever the new person is would get the difference if they started right away or however that that would work.
I actually didn't know what my question was.
And by doing it in June, you'd also already know what the turnbacks would be for the different departments and have a better picture. You'd also have free cash certified, which I spoke to DOR today. They had a couple of questions. I've been pulling together the information that they've requested. We'll probably have free cash certified in the next few days, I hope.
So, the, for the next budget cycle, we need to appropriate, raise appropriate for this as opposed to try to find it through turnbacks, right?
That is correct. I, in the charter, it does state that the pay for the Town Council is set in the annual budget. And so, that would be what we would do, since this year it was not. That's why we're in this pickle. To find forty-one thousand five hundred dollars is not an easy task, so.
Fair enough.
Hopefully, the weather works for us and maybe we have some utility turn back. I don't know.
I have a question for Town Council. You might not be able to answer this tonight, Jim.
I can make it up though.
Okay.
Perfect.
So, in, in the charter, it does specify that compensation for the council shall be set in the annual town budget. Is it appropriate that we can do it at any other time of the year?
But for this year, I would say no. But this is the first year that the council's been in existence and so the budget was set before the council was created, actually. So, when you set the budget for next year, that will be set by you as the council submitted to the manager and the manager will then submit a budget back to you for approval. So, I view this request as a request for establishing the compensation for the council in the current year. The budget for the town having already been appropriated, it's impossible to incorporate this into that request. So, the same process is being followed. You're doing exactly the same thing that would have to happen. You're setting your request for what your compensation would be. It's going to the count, to the manager. The manager is then determining whether he or she feels that that's within the keepings of the financial well-being of the town and submitting it back to you for an appropriation. So, my long-winded answer to your question is yes. I, I believe it's appropriate to do, but only in this instance. In future years where you're asked a question, I would say no, you can't amend your salary during the year. You have to do it as part of your budget process.
Okay, thank you.
Executive session. Jim, do you have anything for us for executive session?
Thank you.
Do you have something for executive session?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Sorry. You don't, so we don't have executive session, uh, that leaves us at ten. Everybody's favorite.
We're good.
The German.
Second.
We have moved and seconded. Uh, there's no discussion, I would assume, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.